And let the record note that all council members are present this evening. We have some minutes from the meeting of March 6th. Without objection, they'll be approved. All right, we will then move on to our schedule of committee meetings. Ms. Haynes?
We have a half-day schedule this week. On Wednesday, March 15th, we're going to start out with land use and planning from 9:10 a.m. to 9:30 a.m., then administration and finance from 9:35 a.m. to 9:50 a.m., public works from 9:55 a.m. to 10:55 a.m., and we'll finish up with committee of the whole from 11 o'clock a.m. to 12:30 p.m. All meetings will be right here in council chambers.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. Any changes to the committee's schedule? Ms. Kares?
I don't have a change. I have a hopeful addition to the agenda for one of the meetings. Is that something that I can still add? I've never tried to do it on a Monday before.
Sure.
Do I need to do so right now?
Why don't you tell us what it is? And we'll see.
It's in my email, and I don't have it available to you. I want to talk about the, during committee of the whole, when we're having a meeting with the county commissioners, I'd like to add two things to the agenda. One of them is to discuss the successes and challenges of the Bonner Community Council, and the, oh, I remembered the other, which is to discuss East Missoula annexation, if it's going to happen, how it's going to happen, and general education for myself on that topic.
Okay. Those are your two additional agenda items.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else on the committee's schedule? All right, with that, we will move on to the public comment portion of our agenda. This is your opportunity to comment on items not elsewhere on the agenda this evening.
Candy Matthew Jenkins, 1211 Cooper Street. The Soviet art of brainwashing called psychopolitics, the art of mental healing, as read into the Congressional Record of the House Un-American Activities through 1936 to 1939. The behavior of children is regulated in this fashion in every civilized country. The father, finding himself unable to bring about immediate obedience and training on the part of his child, resorts to physical violence, and after administering punishment of the physical nature to the child, on several occasions, is gratified to experience complete obedience on the part of the child each time the father speaks. In that parents are wont to be lenient with their children, they seldom administer sufficient punishment to bring about optimum obedience. And I'm going to end there, because I have two comments for tonight. One is a threat to Missoula residents on a comment our mayor made, that the taxes would go up a million dollars a year as long as he was mayor. And I find that very disappointing and not very professional of him. And the other thing is I don't like the mayor making opinions in the paper and addressing himself as Mayor Egan, because he's never been my mayor, and that was not my opinion on the ACA. So if he wants to lodge an opinion, do it under his own name and not represent everybody in the community by doing it.
Any other general public comment this evening? Yes, sir.
Kincooke, 615 Cooley. Thanks to the city council for directing, to create the draft resolution divesting the city from Wells Fargo. We're still also waiting for a public record of what banking institutions the city does with, deals with, so anything you can do to try to speed that transparency up, greatly appreciated. And also urge the city council to consider divesting from any financial institutions doing business with Sunoco Logistics, Energy Transfer Partners, Energy Transfer and Equities. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any other general public comments this evening? All right, seeing none, we will move on to our consent agenda. Items on that agenda were voted on unanimously in city council committees, and we save a little time on Mondays by considering these items all at once. Ms. Haynes will read the list of consent agenda items aloud, so folks in the audience and those at home will know what we're considering, and we'll invite comment on these items before we vote. Ms. Haynes?
Good evening. We have four items on the consent agenda this evening. The first one is to approve claims in the amount of $333,494.94 for checks dated March 14th, 2017. The second is to approve claims related to the water acquisition in the amount of $75,628.49 for checks dated March 14th, 2017. The third one is to appoint Brian Kearns, Robyn Saha, Max Bose, Craig Couch, and Michael Dorshorst as regular members, and Marsha Brownlee and Bart Mihailovich as alternatives to the energy and climate team for four terms, beginning immediately and ending on July 31st, 2019, and three terms, beginning immediately and ending on July 31st, 2020, or to be determined by the council. And the last item is to authorize the mayor to sign a lease with an option-to-purchase agreement with the Missoula Food Bank for a 1,233 square-foot space to be located at 1720 Wyoming Street, and to sign a sublease agreement with the University of Montana to make the space available for Spectrum Children's Nutrition Education Programming.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. Any questions or comments from council members on the consent agenda this evening? Seeing none, anyone in the audience here to comment?
You have on two, the Water Act was...
Ms. Matthew Jenkins, would you identify yourself for the record, please?
Candy Matthew Jenkins. Approved claims, what are those claims for? And the lease, how much is the lease?
Okay. Any council members interested in answering those questions or getting answers to those questions, or did you get enough answers in committee? Or in the record that's widely available to you all and the public? All right, with that, we'll have a roll call vote.
Okay, roll call vote on the consent agenda. Armstrong? Armstrong votes yes. Bentley? Bentley votes yes. Kares? Kares votes yes. Dabari? Dabari votes yes. Hetal? Hetal votes yes. Hess? Hess votes yes. Jones? Jones votes yes. Marler? Marler votes yes. Swainy? Swainy votes yes. Von Losberg? Von Losberg votes yes. West? West votes yes. Wilkins? Wilkins votes yes. That is 12 ayes.
And the consent agenda is approved. We will move on to comments from city staff agencies, wards, commissions, authorities, and the community forum. I'm unaware of any of those this evening. We do, however, have a number of public hearings. State law and our own rules set guidelines for inviting comment on, in a formal way, on a variety of issues, and following a staff report on each of these, the council and I will invite comment. Council typically votes on the same evening as a public hearing unless one member elects to return that item to committee for further consideration. We'll take these in order this evening, beginning with ward boundary adjustments, and we have a staff report this evening from Mr. Wally.
My name is Garan Wally. I'm a GIS analyst/planer in the Development Services Department at the City of Missoula. And tonight, I'm going to talk to you for the second public hearing about the ward redistricting project I've been working on. So every two years, city council and staff work together to look at reassessing the boundaries of our voting wards, and every 10 years, the census data comes out and we readjust the ward boundaries based on the exact population counts provided by the census. In the interim years, we use a population model that uses residential building permit data to increase the population throughout the city and in those wards. We used 2015, 2016 building permits to estimate growth in the city, and most of that development will be built and occupied by the end of 2017, just in time for the new representatives to take their seats in 2018. This is a timeline of how ward redistricting comes along. In 2011, we redistricted based on the exact 2010 census population data. No changes were made in '13. Changes were made in '15 to wards one and two. Changes are required this cycle that I'll get to shortly. We're not sure about '19, depends on building permits, and '21, we're hoping to have new census data provided. We have few considerations when making ward district changes. One is to maintain the population of each ward within 3% of all the wards averaged. We keep ward boundaries regular and compact and easy for voters to understand. We try to use natural or physical geographic boundaries and respect some of the political boundaries as well, and we avoid redistricting a seated representative out of their ward. Here's a map of how the current wards stand today. The little red crosshairs represent the representatives living in those wards. An overlayed onto the current ward map are 2015, 2016 building permit data graduated by unit size. Notice the development in the particular increase in growth in two, six, and three. The population model estimates our total city population at 73,117 people. The average population per ward, 12,187. That plus or minus 3% turns out to be 366 people. So in English, that means that each ward has to be between 11,821 to 12,553. Here are the ward metrics as they stand today. Note Ward Two and Ward Six are over that 3% in this column here, and Ward Four is low at negative 5.6%. So to make these wards come into alignment, our first option and second option, that both include this recommended adjustment, and that is for Ward Four to move north toward the Bitterroot Rail Line and the sort of Southgate Mall at the Southgate neighborhood area, and that would consolidate the Southgate Triangle neighborhood towards four and five and exclude six with this move. Option one is to push Ward One north to Cooper Street along this southeast corner of Ward And this is what alignment would look like if Ward One, or if option one were adopted. Notice more equal alignment, all within plus or minus 3%. Our second option pushes Ward Six north across the Clark Fork River, along the Russell Street Bridge and Broadway. And this is how alignment would look if option two were followed. Staff prefers option one because it follows and respects the Clark Fork River as a natural boundary line, and option two does not. So I conclude my presentation with the recommended action to adopt or deny an ordinance amending Title I, Chapter 1.16, entitled "Election Wardes: Revising and Updating Ward Boundaries Based on New Population Estimates Using Either Redistricting Option One or Option Two." Thank you. I'll be available for questions.
And thank you, Mr. Wally. With that, I will open the public hearing on the proposal to amend the ward boundaries. Anyone interested? All right, with that, I will close the public hearing. Questions or comments from council members? Mr. Dabari?
So in the past, I've spoken about taking a number of different looks at how to adjust the ward boundaries for Ward Four, and I know folks, Mr. Wally and Mr. Haynes, had worked on that for a while, and although I'm not completely thrilled with this option, I think it certainly is the most easy change for the time being, and I think as we get more population figures, especially after the next census, a more robust redistricting will have to take place, and I think we could probably straighten out some of the issues that at least I seem to have regarding this change now. So for the time being, I'm willing to support option one for the adjustment to the Ward Four boundary, and I would support option one for the adjustment to the Ward One boundary as well.
Any other questions? Did I? Sorry. Okay. Any other questions? All right, with that, Ms. Marler?
I move that we adopt an ordinance amending Title I, Chapter 1.16, entitled "Election Wardes: Revising and Updating Ward Boundaries Using Option One Based on New Population Estimates."
And that motion is in order. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we've had a public hearing. We'll have a roll call vote.
Roll call vote on ward boundaries. Armstrong? Armstrong votes yes. Bentley? Bentley votes yes. Kares? Kares votes yes. Dabari?
Did you make the recommended motion for option one?
Yes.
Great, yes.
Hetal? Hetal votes yes. Hess? Hess votes yes. Jones? Jones votes yes. Marler? Marler votes yes. Swainy? Swainy votes yes. Von Losberg? Von Losberg votes yes. West? West votes yes. Wilkins? Wilkins votes no. That's 11 ayes and one no.
And the motion is approved. We'll move on to our second public hearing, which is a conditional use request at 2413 North Reserve for a tavern and casino use. And with our staff report this evening, Ms. Baker.
My name is Jenny Baker. I'm with Development Services. I will talk to you today about a request that we have from Jeffrey Jones of MIB LLP, represented by Mike Cave of Merrick Lens Architects, for a tavern and casino conditional uses requested at 2413 Reserve, North Reserve Street. I think Mr. Cave is here today. So the property is located where you see the red star on this slide. It's North Reserve Street across from Target. It's on the same parcel as a Hoagieville Restaurant and Outback Steakhouse with which it will share the building. This area is part of Missoula Ward Two and the Captain John Mullin Neighborhood Council. The property is zoned C-24 slash EC, so community commercial with an enterprise commercial Our Missoula growth policy recommends a land use designation of regional commercial and services. The growth policy describes regional commercial and services as the type of facilities that need to be located in proximity to major transportation routes and require large land area. Now, we're taking a look at the proposed site plan, and you can see here that the Hoagieville is down at the bottom, and beside that is one green arrow, which is one of the two driveway entrances. The other one is up at the top, sort of to the left. The building where the casino will be adjacent to Outback has the hatching on it. According to Title 20, a casino must be located on a parcel with frontage on an arterial street, and Reserve Street is classified as a principal arterial. Both of the driveways which lead into the parcel are from private road access easements. This is the floor plan, and so you can see the section with the bar is over at the bottom on the left, and the bar has 12 seats. The gaming area is where the machines are located. There are 20 seats there. There's one entrance to the casino facing Reserve Street, and another one, you can see depicted towards the right on this slide. There is a door that connects between the casino and Outback, but it is not for the use of patrons. We will look at some building elevations. This is the east elevation facing Reserve. This is just the part where the casino will be, and to the right, as you'll see in the next slide, it's beside Outback. This picture gives an idea from the front. You can see where it is, the east elevation in relation to Outback, and then on the bottom is the south elevation, and minimal changes are proposed to the exterior of the building as part of this project. There will be the addition of a door on that south elevation. Now, we'll talk about parking. According to Title 20, if the required parking is within 110% of the prior requirement, as is the case here, we'll see, no new parking needs to be added. So there are currently 99 parking spaces in the lot, and the prior total requirement for all combined uses was 98 spaces. The total requirement for the combined uses is 101. That is within the 110% credit, and so no new additional parking is needed by this Looking at the conditional use review criteria, the project meets all applicable zoning regulations. It is an existing building which is compatible in scale and design with the other commercial structures surrounding it. The proposed tavern and casino use is similar to surrounding properties, all of which are commercial as well, and the traffic generated by the project will not pose any inconvenience or detriment to existing traffic patterns or traffic safety in the area. As a result, staff recommendation is approval of the tavern and casino conditional use at 2413 North Reserve Street, subject to one condition of approval that requires the building permit approval to substantially conform to the design submitted at the time of conditional use review. That is my presentation. If you have questions, I will happily answer them, and Mr. Cave is also here.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. At this point, I'm happy to open the public hearing on the proposed conditional use.
Candy Matthew Jenkins. I guess it's, here we go again with another casino, another tavern, and problems that they generate for our population of kids because 18-year-olds can gamble, and I don't know who has all this money in town that they can spread it out around to all the casinos and taverns. So I'm not for this situation, and I think responsible adults that we're supposed to be, should be looking out for our children, though they may be small now. They are going to grow up, and it's not too uncommon to have 13-year-olds rebelling against their parents. So you're setting up a fertile field for whatever goes, goes in this town, and not really considering our youth.
Anyone else on the conditional use? All right, with that, I will close, I'm sorry. With that, I will close the public hearing. Are there questions from council members? Ms. Kares?
May I make a comment that ends in a question?
You may ask a question that will result in a comment later. How's that?
That sounds good. Thanks, Senator. Mr. Nugent, could you repeat what you shared with me post-committee last week about the rules around new licenses based on population?
Yes, it came up in committee last week. They were wondering how many licenses Montana allows in Missoula, and the state statutes do govern how many licenses there are, and for the populations above 5,000, you get five licenses for the first 3,000 in population, and then for every 1,500 in population after that, you get one more license. And then in the areas outside the city that are considered the county and more rural, they have a lower threshold of 750 per license, so actually outside the city limits, there could be more. And also, historically, licenses within the five-mile radius of the city are allowed to come into the city if there's a sales transaction, but it's all governed by state law, and they're pretty lengthy state statutes.
Further questions? Mr. Dabari?
So just to say it in other words, it's not the city council's purview as to how many taverns or casinos there are. It's basically a land use question that revolves around what's in our current zoning and what's permitted or conditional in our current zoning, right? We don't have a choice on how many casinos and taverns there are. We just have a choice of where they're located. Is that correct?
Mr.?
Correct.
Okay. Further questions? All right, seeing none, Mr. Dabari?
So I move to approve the tavern and casino conditional use request in accordance with Missoula City Zoning Ordinance Title 20, Sections 20.10, .020D, 20.40, .040, 20.85, .070, and 20.105, .0401, or I and X, based on the findings of fact in the staff report and subject to the conditions of approval.
Thank you, Mr. Dabari. That motion is in order. Is there discussion on the motion? Ms. Kares?
I'll be voting in support of this motion, as we discussed on Wednesday and I've reviewed briefly with the question period. There is no room for us to say that our market is too saturated or there are too many casinos in our community, and that's the state's place. And when we think about location of a casino and we think about comments like we received already, this is probably a better location than many that we would find. It's not within a neighborhood. It is on Reserve Street. I think that it meets the character of that strip of places where you buy things, and I object to gambling, but it's a state right, and this is private property, and I'll be voting in support.
Further discussion? Seeing none, we've had a public hearing. We'll have a roll call vote on the conditional use.
On the tavern conditional...
On the tavern conditional use, Armstrong? Armstrong votes yes. Bentley? Bentley votes yes. Kares? Kares votes yes. Debary? Debary votes yes. Hettall? Hettall votes yes. Hess? Hess votes yes. Jones? Jones votes yes. Marler? Marler votes yes. Swainy? Swainy votes yes. Von Laasberg? Von Laasberg votes yes. West? West votes yes. And Wilkins? Wilkins votes yes. That's 12 eyes.
And that motion is approved. Our next public hearing this evening is on another conditional use request, this time at 1601 Tamarack for an accessory dwelling unit. And our staff report this evening comes from Ms. McNamara.
Good evening, everyone. For the record, Anita McNamara with Development Services. This is a request from Rick Craig and Amy Sillenberg for a proposed accessory dwelling unit at 1601 Tamarack Street. The property is located approximately one and a half blocks of east of Rattlesnake Drive and is within the upper Rattlesnake neighborhood in City of Missoula Ward 1. The neighborhood is characterized primarily by detached one- and two-story, single-dwelling residences. The parcel contains an existing principal dwelling unit, and the parcel also contains a detached two-car garage accessory structure. The applicable regional plan is Our Missoula, the city's growth policy, which recommends a land use designation of residential low, which is a density of one to two dwelling units per acre. The subject property is Zoned R40, which is a residential district, a single-family zoning district, and permits one dwelling for every 40,000 square feet of land area. The subject property is 1.49 acres, or approximately 55,200 square feet, which would permit one dwelling unit. And this is the site plan on the screen. The principal dwelling and detached two-car garage are existing, and I'll just quickly show them here. So, this is the existing house, and this is the existing garage. The proposal is to construct a 600-square-foot accessory dwelling unit west of the garage, which is outlined in red. A third parking spot will be paved to city standards and will be adjacent to the existing driveway and garage to satisfy the three off-street parking requirement. So, this is the existing garage, which provides two parking spaces, and this area is where the parking will be provided for the proposed ADU. And this is the floor plan for the proposed ADU. It measures 220 by 30, which is approximately 600 square feet, and meets the size requirements for an accessory dwelling unit. The unit will provide full dwelling and amenities such as a kitchen, bathroom, living space, and a bedroom. And this is a photo of the front of the principal dwelling. And this is the existing detached garage. And this is a proposal of what the elevation for the proposed ADU. So, the applicants are proposing to construct the ADU in accordance with the standards found in Title 20, except for the requirement that ADUs be connected to city sewer, for which they were granted a variance by the Board of Adjustment in 2016. And the City County Health Department and DEQ have approved a septic and drain field system for the ADU. Staff has reviewed the requested conditional use and found that it complies with the zoning standards, is compatible with the existing neighborhood and operating characteristics, and is safe for all modes of transportation. And in conclusion, staff recommends that the ADU be approved as a conditional use at 1601 Tamarack Street, based on the findings of fact in the staff report, and subject to the four recommended conditions of approval. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions, and the applicants are here as well.
Thank you, Ms. McNamara. With that, I will open the public hearing on this conditional use request. Anyone interested? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Are there questions from council members? Seeing none, Mr. Debary?
I move to approve the conditional use request for a detached accessory dwelling unit for 1601 Tamarack Street in the R40 zoning districts, district, in accordance with the City Zoning Ordinance Title 20, Sections 20.50.020, 20.45.060, and 20.85.07, based on the findings of fact in the staff report and subject to the conditions of approval.
And that motion is in order. Is there discussion on the motion? Mr. Wilkins?
So, I won't support this. I'm a firm believer that single-family neighborhoods should be just single-family neighborhoods and not have another dwelling on that lot. So, I will not support this.
Further discussion? Mr. Von Laasberg?
Thanks. I'm happy to support this for several reasons, a few of which, pleased to see the process incorporate the notification to the neighbors and council has all seen the public comment, the supportive public comment from the folks around the property, the consistency with the growth policy and zoning. And I think also, you look at that lot and the size of that lot relative to the minimum lot size, this ADU structure is completely appropriate and sized. If you just kind of look at the relative proportion of the lot size being about a time and a half the size of the minimum 40,000 square foot, I believe it was. So, I'm happy to support this.
Further discussion? Ms. West?
I am also happy to support this. I think especially if you look at the properties that are in the county across the street, they are a bit more dense than the city-owned side, or not owned, but city incorporated side of the street, and I look forward to seeing what they build. I'm sure it's going to be lovely.
Further discussion? Seeing none, we've had a public hearing, and we'll have a roll call vote.
On the ADU conditional use, Armstrong? Armstrong votes yes. Bentley? Bentley votes yes. Kares? Kares votes yes. Debary? Debary votes yes. Hettall? Hettall votes yes. Hess? Hess votes yes. Jones? Jones votes yes. Marler? Marler votes yes. Swainy? Swainy votes yes. Von Laasberg? Von Laasberg votes yes. West? West votes yes. Wilkins? Wilkins votes no. That's 11 eyes, one no.
And the conditional use is approved. Our fourth public hearing this evening is on a resolution amending the fiscal year 2017 budget. This is a Development Services item regarding the Building Eye program, and our staff report this evening comes from Mr. Veru.
Good evening. I'm Don Veru, the Assistant Director for Development Services. In November of 2015, City Council adopted the Building Eye program. And along with that program was a yearly subscription. And somehow, we didn't get that into the 2017 budget. So, I'm here today to request that action be done.
Thank you, Mr. Veru. With that, I will open the public hearing on the budget amendment. All right, seeing no takers, I will close the public hearing. Are there questions from council? And I have actually one. Mr. Veru, where's the money coming from?
There's actually three parts to this. One is the planning module, then we have the building module, and then also the engineering module. The engineering and planning module monies would come from the general fund. And the building module, of course, would be from the enterprise building fund.
Thank you. Questions, Ms. Kares?
When you came before committee regarding this subject, I had asked if you knew how many users were, how many public users were using this really helpful system, and I was wondering if you found the answer to that question.
Yes, we did. And we have over 261 that have registered on the program. And then, over the past 10 weeks, we found out there's over 15,000 searches, which is, you know, pretty good, because I think a lot of other citizens and developers could, you know, a lot of people in Missoula could still look into this and find that this program's extremely helpful and has a lot of good information.
Thank you.
Further questions? Ms. Jones?
Just to kind of follow up on what the mayor had asked. I was thinking back on last September when we heard that Northwestern Energy would be paying less taxes, so we had $200,000 in income that we were not going to be getting, and that unanticipated loss, we just rolled into the budget instead of raising taxes. Is this, with this, is it the same in that you're just going to roll it into these separate pots of money and pull a little bit from each of them? Or how does it work exactly? I don't really understand what you say when you say it comes from this module and that module. What does that mean?
Okay, so, the engineering module, if someone is interested in the various permits that the engineering division issues, and then we have a planning, which the various permits, like fence, not fence, but fence are in the engineering module, but ADUs, we got blank, but there's quite a few various permits, conditional use, zoning, and the planning module. So, those are actually more of a general fund-sponsored program, where the building, which issues building permits, electrical, plumbing, mechanical, building, commercial electrical, or residential permits, that comes, that is being paid through the building fund, which is enterprise. So, we, I think it's broken down for you there, too. I think finance broke down the, I think we are talking about...
So, Ms. Jones, if I understand your question correctly, we'll be managing this through budget savings typically. So, budget, and you'll hear this during your mid-year reports here relatively soon, but we generally anticipate one, one and a half to 2% of budget savings annually. On a $150 million budget, this $31,000 is something we can, we'll be able to figure out. There wouldn't be a tax increase associated with it. However, this is not typical practice. It's not what we, it's not the way we like to perform. However, this is good accounting. We could certainly, we could certainly pay for this through savings, but we wanted to bring this to you so that you could clearly understand that this was, A, a budget item, one that we intended to have in the budget, and one that we intend to have moving forward, and we want to account for it properly and transparently. Further questions? Mr. Debary?
So, this program is something that not just ordinary citizens can use to do searches, but it's something that's available to all of the contractors and anyone who just is looking to try to understand what may be happening in terms of permitting or even planning activities that are taking place anywhere in the city, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Further questions? All right, with that, Ms. Hettall?
Thank you. I recommend that the City Council approve a resolution amending the annual appropriations for the City of Missoula, Montana, set forth in the fiscal year 2017 budget that increases the total city budget by $31,950 in order to pay the yearly Building Eye subscription maintenance approved by City Council November 2015 that was not included in the 2017 budget.
And that motion is in order. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we've had a public hearing. We'll have a roll call vote.
On the budget amendment, Armstrong? Armstrong votes yes. Bentley votes yes. Kares? Kares votes yes. Debary? Debary votes yes. Hettall? Hettall votes yes. Hess? Hess votes yes. Jones? Jones votes yes. Marler? Marler votes yes. Swainy? Swainy votes yes. Von Laasberg? Von Laasberg votes yes. West? West votes yes. And Wilkins? Wilkins votes yes. We've got 12 eyes.
And that motion is approved. Our final public hearing this evening is on a resolution amending, once again, the fiscal year 2017 budget for parks and recreation. This time, delivering the staff report is Ms. Kinsey.
Good evening, Shirley Kinsey, Recreation Superintendent. The, this amendment basically has three parts. The first is a partnership with the City County Health Department, Let's Move Missoula Initiative, and Providence-St. Pat Hospital. We received a grant for $15,000 to start a morning move program at four elementary schools. Currently, the program is running five days a week at Franklin Hawthorne and Lowell, and at Russell for an active recess. The grant pays for supplies, program coordinator, and a limited number of intermittent staff. The program runs on four to seven volunteers at each school, who encourage the youth to participate in physical activity prior to the school day beginning. The second part of the amendment is the Kiwanis Park Project. This is a carryover from FY16. The project was missed in the final FY17 budget. The $158,000 is from a CDBG grant. There's $19,650 donation from the Lambros Baron Group, and $10,250 from the Kiwanis Club donation to complete this project. And then, lastly, the third is the amendment to the budget for $4,992 to pay for half of refurbishing the city gym floor. And that is paid through the enterprise fund. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Kinsey. With that, I will open the public hearing on this budget amendment. And seeing no takers, I will close the public hearing. Are there questions from council members? Seeing none, Mr. Von Laasberg? Or, I'm sorry, no, this still lives in A and F. Pardon me, Ms. Hettall?
I recommend that we adopt a resolution amending the annual appropriations for the City of Missoula, Montana, set forth in the fiscal year 2017 budget, and capital improvement program that increases the total city budget by $207,892.
And that motion is in order. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we will have a roll call vote.
On the budget amendment, Armstrong? Armstrong votes yes. Bentley? Bentley votes yes. Kares? Kares votes yes. Debary? Debary votes yes. Hettall? Hettall votes yes. Hess? Hess votes yes. Jones? Jones votes yes. Marler? Marler votes yes. Swainy? Swainy votes yes. Von Laasberg? Von Laasberg votes yes. West? West votes yes. And Wilkins? Wilkins votes yes. That's 12 eyes.
And that motion is approved as well. That's the last of our public hearings. I'll pass on communications from the mayor, and we'll begin general comments from council members this evening with Mr. Debary and Ms. Kares.
Today, the city released a memo regarding the recent story by KCI about expenditures on city credit cards, and I wanted to note that memo because I think it very well describes the expenditures in a way that does not make me concerned about our policies. In fact, it makes me realize that we have good management in place. And I spoke on the 27th about how I appreciated people looking at our data, and I think we should do more in regards to big data, but I wondered about the intentions of that story. And after seeing this memo and understanding what all of those expenditures really were on, I really, really wonder about the intent of the story, because, like I already said, I just think that, in many cases, it's the result of good management and nice oversight. So, that is on the city website. I will email you it. If you can't find it, feel free to reach out for it, because I think it's a good piece of business. Thank you.
Ms. West? Ms. Armstrong? Ms. Bentley? Ms. Marler passes. Mr. Wilkins? Ms. Swainy? Mr. Hess? Mr.? Ms. Marler passes. Mr. Wilkins, Ms. Swainy, Mr. Hess, Mr. Von Losberg.
Thanks. There was a question, a couple of questions during a public comment. I was a little slow on the draw. Ms. Matthew Jenkins, I was happy to address those. And the fees associated with the water acquisition, about half of that is associated with a server and various computer equipment associated with the setting up of the billing system. There's some of our attorney's fees with both Perkins Coie and the Boon Karlberg, local firm, and a few fees associated with the first two employees who have come on board as part of that. And I also just wanted to mention, I think it's a great project. And so appreciate the question about the lease associated with, and construction associated with the food bank project. And for anyone in the public interested in knowing, the city's going to cover the build-out to the tune of about $216,000 of the final piece of construction of a space where the food bank is. And also $82,000 for exhibits. We're going to lease that to Spectrum. There's some really good ideas associated with having Spectrum occupy space with the food bank and serve the kids that are part of coming in to get food from the food bank there. And because there's some new market tax credits being used, we'll lease that space for a dollar a year for eight years and then buy that at the fair market value, less our investment in it, which will probably cover that total investment we'll see at that point. But I was happy to support this in committee, but wanted to take the opportunity to describe it. Thanks.
Mr., I'm sorry, Ms. Jones and Ms. Hettall?
I just wanted to let everyone know that the Missoula City Fire Department has won the Scott Stairclimb in Seattle for, I believe, the fourth year in a row. And Andy Droback, once again, has won first place. He's amazing. So congratulations.
Thank you. All, pardon me, we'll move on to committee reports. Items here weren't approved unanimously in council committees. And the chair of that committee will make a motion reflecting that committee's actions and will might comment on each of these items. I see but one committee report this evening. That happens in administration and finance. Ms. Hettall?
It's kind of my night tonight. I recommend that we adopt a resolution of the city, of the, here we go. I was on a roll, not anymore. Adopt a resolution of the Missoula City Council establishing a property tax relief fund for individuals disproportionately affected by city property tax, also known as Betty's Fund.
That motion is in order? Is there discussion on the motion? Ms. Kares?
I'm all for safety net programs and truly believe in collectively caring for our community. However, I don't think this feel-good program is a good idea and will be voting no tonight. The main reasons I am not in support are that it is unclear how the program will function, where the funds will come from, how it will serve folks who aren't being served elsewhere, and the number of philanthropic asks on our community already. Attached documents mask how many staff hours will be necessary, receiving applications, reviewing for completeness, assessing capacity of the fund, communicating denials or awarded funds, fundraising for the program, sending donation letters, sending files to the IRS, and more. The materials only say that staff time needs are TBD, not which departments or individuals will be responsible for carrying this out. The resolution states that the city council wishes for this fund to be funded by citizen donations. However, in committee and in attached documents, we've heard about general fund money going towards this through staff time, sale of some city property, and other examples. While there is less money, excuse me, when there is less money in the general fund, it means the city cannot bear increased expenses as well and taxes can increase at a higher rate. Increased taxes from the county, school, and the cities are the very problem we are trying to address with this first-come, first-served program. I understand there are many people in our community for whom the cost of taxes is a burden too much to bear. I am so sorry to say I don't have a solution for that problem, other than that this council and future councils need to do all they can to make good policy and create a positive climate that will result in increased property values and more properties, so the taxes are widely shared. Building a program that is first-come, first-served will help those that, while certainly burdened, are also most connected and most able to access services rather than maybe those most in need. My point about the number of philanthropic asks already in our community holds less weight for me, but I think it is still worth mentioning. They say you shouldn't start a new nonprofit unless you're sure the service you're hoping to provide is already, isn't already being offered because of, among other things, duplication and overhead. Perhaps we should be sending folks to Summit Independent Living, Missoula Aging Services, or other nonprofits along those lines. Perhaps we'll be taking dollars from those same places with the creation of this program. You may say that there is little downside to this program. I would counter that is because the program is too big of a mystery to approve.
Ms. Marler?
Thanks. I wanted to thank Ms. Armstrong for working on this and bringing it forward and for staff for helping to put it together. I feel differently than Ms. Kares. This, we've always discussed in committee, and we've had this in committee several times, that this would just be funded by donations when people, if and when people feel moved to make donations. If there's no donations in the fund, then there wouldn't be any funds to give away. I feel that, as we discussed, any impacts to the general fund would be negligible, meaning impacts from staff time to look at applications, et cetera. And if it turns out to be otherwise, we can revisit the program. We can look for a different partner, organization to take it on if necessary. I mean, if you don't ever try something new, then you don't know how it's going to work. I also wanted to stress that we're not setting up a new nonprofit, which is, in fact, an onerous process. I have been involved in setting up nonprofits. And yeah, we're not, we're not doing that. And I am happy to support this and I am cautiously optimistic.
Ms. Armstrong?
So one of the, I'd like to respond to Ms. Kares. The program will be funded by donations, which I cannot go out and ask for or get until the resolution is passed. There are many corporate community partners that have already expressed interest in funding this program. And precedent has been set. The city of Chicago did this recently. And they did it in response, knowing that there was going to be a major property tax bump that was coming. They did it as a one-time program and rebated $20 million. And they did not have to put any additional staff in place because they already had an accounts payable and accounts receivable and finance department, which administered the program. As the applications will be online and dumped into a spreadsheet, they will be easy to amalgamate and process. And I have offered to do that for the City of Missoula for the first year. And as we go through and decide how much time it's actually going to take, we have discussed perhaps the new housing department taking this on or finance. If it becomes a very large program and we receive a lot of donations and it's something that we can distribute to a lot of people, we'll look, as Ms. Marler said, at staffing down the line. I know that my colleagues to the right here have quite a few questions about the first-come, first-served concept. And I have talked to aging services and all of our agencies that service folks in the lower-income bracket and property owners that are disadvantaged when our taxes go up. And they have agreed that this is not something that is currently being serviced as an auxiliary program. And the main purpose of this program is to make sure that the folks in lower incomes are participating in the state tax rebates that are already out there. And after we talked to the Department of Revenue, they said 40% of the people that are eligible for the minimum $1,000 tax rebate are not taking it. So if, the purpose of this program is to make sure that you only get this rebate after you've already applied for the $1,000 state rebate. If you're an elderly, if you're eligible for the elderly tax credit or the veterans' tax credits that you have already applied for and are receiving those, then you would be eligible for this credit. So it's really to raise awareness of all the rebates that are already out there that people are not taking. And then, we understand taxes are going up. And we understand that the county is going to assess quite a few taxes between the library and the school bonds that have not hit yet. And people are not able to pay those. So I think this is a way that the city can step in and help.
Ms. West?
All right. I think that this proposal to create a property tax program is well-meaning and comes from great intentions. However, I'm also not going to support this proposal as it stands. As an individual and a homeowner, I have greatly benefited from the LEAP program as a renter and a homeowner, and then also from the property assistance, property tax assistance program. I enrolled in LEAP because I was connected to those services while my husband served as an AmeriCorps Vista, but heard about the PTAP program on a radio ad completely by chance. I absolutely agree that the existing programs are under-promoted and that if a large part of the goal in creating the Betty's Fund is to aggressively market these existing programs, I think that should be done regardless of the creation of the program. But I also think that an aggressive marketing of existing programs requires staff time and dedication and strategic planning. My biggest hesitation is that this fund does nothing to address the systematic and underlying issues that are resulting in unsustainable property tax burdens. That the creation of this fund is likely to be soon followed by a likely property tax increase, however slight it may be, in the upcoming budget. You know, it's a, that was not a complete sentence. I apologize. I put a period there. The short window of application and the prerequisite requirements of receiving LEAP or PTAP or any of the other property tax assistance program keeps us from being able to, hold on. Both the PTAP. All of these programs have windows of enrollment and they cannot be applied retroactively. What this means is that this fund will only help those individuals who are already the most connected to their resources, not necessarily those who are most in need. And it is completely unusable for individuals that are in moments of crisis. The reliance on citizen donations to support this program is also worrying to me. If there was an institutional funding source such as linkage fees, for example, that are charged per square foot on new commercial developments, it would be, I would be more likely to support a program such as this. The competition for private donations in this town is fierce. And I don't think the city should be competing for those funds that, in many cases, provide essential services to many of our most vulnerable citizens. I also disagree with volunteer administration of this program by a fellow city council member. I think it crosses the boundaries of the roles that individuals have within intentionally separate structures of government between city government, or policymakers and administration. It also calls to question the overall sustainability of this program and if no staff time is dedicated and if there are no funds dedicated. Thank you.
Mr. Von Losberg?
I'm going to support this. I appreciate Ms. Armstrong's work in doing this. I don't know how it's going to work out. None of us know exactly how it's going to work out. What I do know is if we don't try, we're just going to sit and wonder what might have been. We can end it. We can expand it. We can change it. This is a pilot. It's a good opportunity to give it a, give it a shot, and I'm going to support it.
Mr. Wilkins?
So I don't have a big, long letter to speak from. So I guess I'm just going to speak from the heart. If this helps one person, it's done its job. Just one person. You know, we call this Betty's Fund, and there's a reason why we call it Betty's Fund. Because Betty was a lady that didn't know how to pay her taxes. Actually, a little bit different than this. But her house ended up getting taken away from her. It was sold to an out-of-state corporation. Betty, after much hassle by myself and the city attorney here, I think she got something like $35,000 for a $300,000 house that was all paid and cleared. So if this helps one person realize that they can get a little help and maybe find out about other help, this is an important thing to do. So I'm going to support it.
Excuse me, Ms. Bentley?
I'm going to support it. I thank Councilwoman Armstrong for bringing it forward. I, you know, have concerns about the administration from a city councilperson, but I feel like, you know, we can see how it goes this first year. I don't want to let the perfect be the enemy of the good. And I don't see that this is going to do, you know, catastrophic damage. So I feel like, why don't we give it a chance? And it has precedent in working in other communities. And I'm going to support it.
Ms. Jones?
I'm in support of this. I think that we are entering some uncharted territory in terms of economics with our income disparity, with housing costs, with health insurance costs. And the more we can be creative and think outside of the box and bring some ingenuity to these issues is excellent. In city council, we, our hands are tied so often, but within our box, when we can figure out some different way of approaching it, I think, I think that's a great idea. So I don't know how effective this will be, but I think it's a start. And this is a good constructive direction to be going in. So thanks, Ms. Armstrong, for your work on this. I know it's been a lot. Thank you.
Ms. Marler?
I just wanted to comment that this certainly is not going to be the first time that we have a city councilperson serving in a volunteer capacity to review applications for anything like the public works, or public works, public art, or the neighborhood grants, or fill in the blank. I mean, we do a lot of things as volunteers. And I appreciate that people are willing to step up and participate in these. And if it needs to be multiple people involved and not just, you know, one staff and one city councilperson, I bet we can probably make it happen. And I will attempt to call for the question.
You have one more person you'd like to talk, and I bet you don't want to do that.
I take it back.
Mr. Dabari?
So a comment and a question. I think, well, first of all, I'd like to thank Julie for, Ms. Armstrong, for working on this. And I think this, in part, stemmed from a conversation that I had with a constituent who was distressed about her ability to pay, continue to pay her property taxes. I guess the question that I have is that it's unclear to me, reading the resolution, whether or not this, there's going to be a committee that reviews the applications and makes a determination based on merit, or if it's a first-come, first-served application process.
Ms. Armstrong?
I'm hearing first-come, first-served from Ms. Armstrong. I have some questions about this, although I am extremely supportive of the motivation behind doing this. And I'm thinking on the fly here, but I will, I will go ahead and support the motion to establish Betty's Fund. And I'll be curious to see how it works in practice and reserve judgment for whether or not we continue this based on how it goes the first year.
Further discussion? Seeing none, anyone in the audience here to comment?
Candy Matthew Jenkins. I've worked with the state on my taxes and they were very accommodating. And I want to thank Michelle and Heidi. I agree with you totally. I think with the guarantee of a million dollars a year in increases that people should take advantage of what the state has to offer first, like Heidi said. And I am disappointed that Ms. Armstrong would pick Chicago as an example, a city that's basically totally bankrupt in high crime and murders. And so I don't think I would have chosen that state. And if you ever look at the tax lien lists, you will find most of the tax liens are on trailers where people live that don't have, that are lower income. And all this tax liens that come out this time of the year, I think the city has a spending problem. And that's not going to be resolved with this issue here. And I'm sorry, I have a difficult time paying my taxes every year, too. And I don't see many advantages for that. But like I say, it's guaranteed a million a year.
Anyone else give a comment? All right, with that, we can have a voice vote on this question. Those in favor, please say aye. Who's opposed? Motion carries. We have no additional committee reports this evening. We do have one item of new business, and that is our legislative up- of new business, and that is our legislative update. You all have seen that. Are there other issues you're interested in discussing this evening? It was a resolution? No, my apologies. We need to go back and do a roll call on the resolution. I'm sorry.
On Betty's Fund?
Yes, please. Thank you, Ms. Hands. My apologies.
Yes, no problem. Armstrong. Armstrong votes yes. Bentley. Bentley votes yes. Kares. Kares votes no. Debary? Debary votes yes. Hettall? Hettall votes yes. Hess? Hess votes yes. Jones? Jones votes yes. Marler? Marler votes yes. Swainy? Swainy votes yes. Von Losberg? Von Losberg votes yes. West? West votes no. Wilkins? Wilkins votes yes. That's ten ayes and two noes.
And the motion is approved. Again, my apologies. Thank you. Now, on to the legislative update. Anyone have any items? All right, we'll have a number of representatives at, in Helena tomorrow for a couple of hearings, one on TIF. We'll be in front of committees on local option, tax, and on fuel tax, which is making its way through the legislature, and we'll keep you posted accordingly. With no other items of new business, are there any additional items to be referred this evening? Seeing none, any miscellaneous communications, reports, petitions, or announcements? Seeing none of those, as always, I thank you for your service, and we are...